Seven o'clock. It's now seven o'clock on Monday, February tenth, twenty twenty five. I call the planning board meeting to session. First, we'll start with the pledge of allegiance. Do a roll call attendance with one member on Zoom. Miss Sadina?
Here.
Mr. Trabu?
Here.
Ms. Henderson?
Yeah.
Mr. Drew?
Here.
I am here, Mr. Parker. Mr. Sumea?
Here.
He's here, and Mr. Robertson is absent tonight. All right, first item is open microphone. If anybody is here on Zoom, please put your hand up.
Chair, there are no hands raised.
Uh, first item on the agenda, Mr. Chairman, is a B two subdivision for zero two Carmina Road in a village of the local zone. The applicant seeks to adjust a lot of items. Today, certainly best of the afternoon.
Thank you, Madam Secretary. Good evening, folks. Attorney Jim Dangora for the applicants, Heather and William Bursey. What's before you is a land swap between brother and sister. Heather Bursey owns the property to the left that's shown on your plan as existing house number two. That's two Carmina. She inherited that from her dad. William owns the property to the right of that, and it's an undeveloped lot, although there are some storage structures and sheds on it. Heather's lot is a little more than 5,000 square feet. Bill's lot is about 9,000 square feet, and what Bill intends to do is convey a 15-foot strip of land to his sister, making her lot slightly larger and his lot slightly smaller. In order to accomplish this, we did go to the Board of Appeals. There is a Board of Appeal decision in your package. That Board of Appeal decision did two things. It approved the reduction in William's lot and also essentially rendered William's lot a buildable lot. So there will be a new house constructed on William's lot. So if it wasn't for this land swap, we wouldn't be here. So all we're doing is asking you folks to approve the lot line change as it appears here so Bill can convey the 15-foot strip to his sister. It's 1,769 square feet. Quickly, with respect to the William's lot, it is undeveloped. There will be a single-family home developed on it. All of the utilities will come off of Avondale. It will have an Avondale. As a matter of fact, I think it does have an Avondale address now, ten Avondale. So from a subdivision standpoint, you folks want to make sure there's adequate access. Avondale is an accepted public way. You should have a note from the fire chief stating that they have no issues with that. So it ticks all the boxes for subdivision control as well. And there'll be a white vinyl fence that William will have installed around the perimeter of his lot in order to give his sister some privacy and the neighbors some privacy. So with your approval, Bill can convey that 15-foot strip to his sister Heather. That's it.
Any questions from the board? Mr. Drew?
No, I don't have any questions. Thank you.
Mr. Trabu?
No, no questions.
Ms. Sadina?
No, no questions.
Mr. Sumea? Henderson?
Oh, Chris.
I was going to turn that mic on. I don't see any lights.
No questions. I had no mic on even.
I have no questions myself. Anybody on Zoom that would have any questions? Just to make sure we check that box. Anybody in the room? If not.
Chair, there are no hands raised.
And I'd like to make a motion to close the public hearing.
I don't think we ever opened one.
Oh, last.
Last one. Yes, we did. Wasn't tonight. I'll make that. I'll second that.
Thank you.
We got a motion in a second. Start with Ms. Sadina.
Aye.
Mr. Trabu?
Aye.
Mr. Sumea?
Yes.
Henderson?
Yes.
Mr. Drew?
Aye.
And I am a yes.
Then I make a motion to approve the B two subdivision zero to two Carmina Road as discussed. Second it.
Yeah. Prove a lot line. Adjustment.
Lot line adjustment.
Lot line adjustment. Sorry, Jane. Lot line adjustment.
Ms. Sadina?
Aye.
Mr. Drew?
Aye.
Ms. Henderson?
Aye.
Mr. Sumea?
Yes.
Mr. Trabu? Uh, yes. And I am a yes.
Very good. Excellent. Thank you, folks.
Uh, we'll wait for the signature, sir.
Yes, we gotta do some signatures.
Like so. Love to you guys. Good one.
Quiet night tonight?
Hopefully. I don't know. You never know.
Is it?
Yes.
Be a fun one. Okay. Two, go. Oh, yeah. Sorry. Not bad. All right. Well, how are you doing today? So, yeah, well, it's funny is when I went to the tech metal fab, they would always leave a bottle of root beer to, in the middle of the hallway, not the hall, the desk. You wouldn't want to drink it, though.
Um.
Okay, we're good.
Second item on the agenda. Um, the second item on the agenda, Mr. Chairman, is to discuss accessory dwelling units or ADUs.
Right. As we all know, this is a state law that is technically in effect right now. So Bilrika residents out there, if you want an ADU, you can pull permits for ADUs now if they meet the regulations that have been provided by the state by right. So that means you're not encroaching on setbacks and sizes meet everything. You can tie into sewer water septic. As long as you check all of those boxes, you can do it. This discussion tonight is a relatively short one. It's whether or not this board wants to bring a warrant article to Springtown meeting just to kind of dot the i's and cross the t's to put this state-owning bylaw into our locals zoning bylaw and with the purpose of adding a short-term rental restriction, much like some of our neighbors have done. So both Burlington and Chelmsford have recently passed ADU bylaws. One had a short-term rental already in their bylaw, so they referenced that section. We do not have it. So tonight is a conversation on do we want to move forward with a zoning bylaw at Springtown meeting that includes a short-term rental restriction. And so I'll open it up to the floor of the members here, and I'll start with Ms. Henderson.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. As I understand it, indeed, the state ADUs are, yeah, by right, possible. They are similar but not the same as our Bilrika in-law apartments. Um, I think the town should treat ADUs like we treat other state-allowed initiatives, like you have childcare, schools are allowed by the state, and we don't have a zoning bylaw for schools. So I would think change nothing in the zoning bylaw. The more we clutter the bylaw, the more we end up not being able to enforce. We get more into weeds by regulating, and enforcement translates to staff without revenues to compensate for the extra staff, which translates to extra taxes, which is what we want to avoid. I have heard concerns about Airbnbs and VIBOs, but I don't think we need to be concerned about it right now. If it were a concern, we would have noticed it already. If it becomes a concern, or if it is a concern and I didn't notice it, I'm on board with creating a bylaw to regulate vacation or short rentals. And then you charge homeowners a fee to cover the enforcement. Chelmsford replaces their limited accessory apartment with state ADU. I don't think that's a good idea at all because it loses, it would lose our current relaxed law where you can do an in-law apartment. Burlington is doing the same thing, if I understand it correctly. Tewksbury, however, explains the state law in a very handy one-pager to explain to the, so without local zoning bylaw changes, they explain in a clear language what the residents can do. So I, it's either keeping the in-law apartments, which is, oh, no, no, it's both. You keep the in-law apartments, which is low-level building requirements but high-level owner occupancy requirements, and then you add ADU by right, by state, which is a high-level building requirement, which I think is almost punishing, but it prohibits owner occupancy requirements. So they're quite different things. I would like to have both with possibly a short rental bylaw. That's my opinion.
Thank you. Mr. Sumea?
Um, so, I mean, I think the, I think last time when the building inspector was here, he explained to us exactly what the, what he thinks of the state EDU and what the town has as, in its bylaws. And his recommendation was for us to leave it as is and keep the state bylaw, keep the state EDU as it is and then use Bilrika accessory dwelling separately and not trying to mingle them together. But my preference with this, the EDU is just trying to address the same issue with the, with housing and stuff. So I think it would be, it would be a good idea if the board looks into not having short-term rental with those EDUs because if we are allowing EDUs and we are letting people use them for short-term rentals, it defeats the purpose of the EDUs being used to subsidize for the shortage of housing. So I would prefer us to add that restriction with the EDU, with the EDUs, not to allow short-term rentals on it.
Good point. Thank you. Thank you, Evans. Mr. Drew?
Thank you. So specifically toward the short-term rental, I'm on the fence, quite frankly, where it's my property, if it were my property and I have a right to do whatever I choose to do with it. However, Mr. Sumea actually just made an excellent point that the short-term rental does, it is counterintuitive to the intent of the ADU law. Having said that, however, I have a question. My primary residence today, could I rent that out as a short-term rental?
Chair, if I may. Although the building commissioner is not here to verify that, I believe we do not have short-term regulations, so therefore you would rent your home to any tenant, whether it's a one-year lease, six-month lease, three-day lease.
Right.
I believe that would be his answer.
And I figured that would be the answer because the bylaws are silent to it, right? So if it's not in there restricting it, then you could probably do it. What's the difference? If I can rent out my primary residence as a short-term rental, why not the ADU? In other words, don't they conflict?
So, Chair, if I may.
Yep.
One of the standards with the state regulations on the ADUs is that we don't overly regulate an ADU more so than we would a single-family home. So if you were to do a short-term rental, it would not be specifically within ADUs. It would apply to any residential unit.
So it wouldn't be specific to the ADU. It would be anything in town.
Correct.
So I wouldn't be able to rent out, if we were to do a bylaw and it were to pass and the state were to approve it, I wouldn't, I'd be prevented then from renting out my primary residence as a short-term rental, if I chose to.
I believe so, yes.
Interesting. So that's another, just another curveball to throw in there and to think about. Again, I commend, Mr. Sumea made an excellent point as far as the spirit of the law and what it is intended for. So I understand the propensity to advocate for prohibiting short-term rentals, but I think there's more consequences to that than we probably realized to begin with. Just food for thought. Thank you.
Ms. Sadina?
Um, well, I want to say, great questions from the board. Anne Marley did an awesome presentation. Everything that you had said, I agree with, which is, you're probably shocked. I can't see the camera, so I can't see your face right now. But the short-term rentals and what Evans brought up and now what Ed brought up is like conflicting. So it's, I don't know how we'd go about it because it is somebody's home. I'm not for the short-term rentals, but we don't have people, I don't think anybody's had many looking for a short-term rental in Bilica. I see that more beachfront properties or things like that, but I don't know. I know years ago, there was people renting out their pools, and then there was an issue with them renting their pool for a day. So I guess that would be on our beware. But I say, just like what Evans was saying and what Marley's, we leave it the way it is, what the building inspector suggested for us, and we move forward from there. The short-term rental is something that we're probably going to have to think a little bit more on. But other than that, I'm glad.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Trabu.
So the only thing is, is regarding Evans, I mean, basically everyone's opinions so far have been actually pretty, you know, comprehensive of raising good questions. You know, I think the thing is, is that we really haven't, the only thing is, is I don't, I don't mind if we say, for example, maybe not for the spring, but if, if possible, October, you wanted to do something for a short-term rental, I wouldn't be opposed to it. My only issue that I have is in what Mark Lumiere, the building inspector, brought up was like, he is going to need probably, for, you know, he basically told us or told me a story essentially that he tried to, you know, someone was, I think, legally renting something, I don't know, and he basically pursued them for like a year and a half and nothing ever came of it. So it's, it's a civil matter and it's very hard to actually get these cases and it can consume a great deal amount of time. So unless we can give an estimate on how much we're going to go with enforcement and if he's going to get more employees, how much money that is, it feels like a town meeting and select board question about how much we actually want to give to him to pursue that. I mean, it's, it's an issue, say, for example, like, just to give kind of maybe a comparison, you know, like wage theft in the state, there's a ton of wage theft. But the problem that, and it's a serious issue and it should be addressed because workers should be getting what they're paid. But the issue is, is that the state needs to provide fundamentally a lot more money, a lot more time, a lot more resources, and a lot more employees. And, you know, obviously, I think, you know, it's worth doing, but, you know, there's, there's just particular about how much enforcement that you're able to actually get. So that would be kind of my question going forward is, is we don't have really an estimate whatsoever. I mean, if we went and did a short-term, you know, we banned short-term rentals and it went to also single-family houses too, like, how is it going to be enforced? What's the amount of time? So until we get maybe more, a better answer on that, I'm not really comfortable of doing it right now. And I also want to see too, right, it's enforced right now. And if we, you know, and doing a law, a bylaw with one to two months as to whether we, you know, we spent, you know, through, through your leadership, we went through here and we actually did, we created, you know, the MBTA communities and we put a lot of effort and time into it. And we made, we made a good product because we took our time with it. And, you know, I deeply appreciate of that. And so I think with this is I just don't want to kind of rush it. You know what I mean? So and also too, I mean, we could look at it and go, oh, if it's working fine in October, then what are we creating a problem for something that isn't actually a problem? So I think giving it some space there. And that's kind of my thing with it. If it starts to be a problem, we're seeing all this and we go, okay, let's devise a bylaw, get it for October. But if it's like, we're seeing it and there's only a few being developed and it's for, you know, maybe they're helping out friends, family, whatever, and there isn't like a, you know, a party going on in the AUD or, you know, you know, like I said, it's also hard to enforce. So that's just my, my take on it.
Good point.
I had one question because Chris just brought it up. I'm sorry. I know, but you brought this up, Chris, and started me thinking. Because we're doing this, and I mean, this would also be something with the taxpayer, with the tax assessor, probably the select board, because Marley's brought this point up. Also, I have, I'm an in-law. My son owns the home, but we're not, it's not considered a multifamily home because he's not receiving rental income federally. Now, when we go to a multifamily, a multi, a, a, a house that builds an in-law and then it's, say, they sell it later, you know, and it was built for an in-law, the individual buys that house, buys that house as a single family still. But I met a gentleman, excuse me, and I just helped him just recently. He bought his home as a single family. His mortgage is for a single family, but our town was taxing him as a multifamily. It was registered with registry of deeds as a single family, but he was still being taxed multifamily. So that's something I know when we, us living in here, my husband and I, we've put something with the courts that we're family and the ADUs can now be rented. How are we going to handle that as far as income-wise for the town, tax-wise? Is that going to change? Are we going to put something in our bylaw that it's, if it's strictly family, then we know it's not rental and it's still a single-family home? This, I didn't even think of that, Chris, until you brought up some things and Marley's, until you brought it, a couple of dawned on me. It's like, you know, I'd hate to say individuals, like my son, for instance, it's a single-family home. His parents live here. There's no intent when we die to do anything with it. If he does rent it, he should be taxed that way. But in the meantime, it's still a single-family. Will individuals like himself owning the home be taxed multifamily by making these changes? And the change, one of the changes would be the short-term rental. Does that change it? This is like confusing. Or am I being confusing, guys?
Oh, so I guess the short answer is our, in our zoning bylaw, our in-law by, you know, bylaw doesn't regulate how it's taxed, right?
Well, that's, that's the thing. Yes.
The tax would be, you know, you're getting more square footage, more bedrooms, more bathrooms, right? So the home is worth more, so the taxes go up because you have more living space. And I would assume that would be the same way with an ADU. It's not a multifamily per se, but you're going to have more square footage, more bathrooms, more bedrooms. So I think that's kind of outside of our scope, but it's, it's, it's good to know, you know, like to note in our head when we talk about enforcement, well, we're going to get more taxes out of these things also. But there's going to be more people there. There's, so it's a variety of things. So I appreciate everybody's thoughts tonight and I feel like I got a temperature of the board that it sounds like we'll wait on this, see how it's going, if there's a need for this short-term rental. We make sure we craft one that's right. We do the, you know, the homework. We do the work. We get the input from the residents. Because, yeah, you wouldn't want to, you know, unknowingly put a restriction on something that, you know, then is going to restrict XYZ also down the line. So definitely needs more thought. And so I think if everybody's in agreement, we're going to let the ADUs be the state law ADUs and Mark can handle them going forward for now. So I think that's kind of the sense that I got from everybody. Kelly, you, you okay with that?
Yeah, hundred percent.
Monitor it as we move forward through the summer here and see what, see what, you know, transpires from it. So thank you, everybody. That was a good conversation on ADUs. I think.
Mr. Chairman?
Sure.
If, um, would we ask the staff to create the user-friendly one-pager?
I think between the staff and the building commissioner, they probably should have some sort of handy-dandy one-pager for residents.
We can absolutely work with the building department to do that.
No motion needed?
No, no motions are needed. We'll start working on that.
That's day-to-day business. They got that stuff.
Very good.
And to the chair, before we adjourn, if I could make, just address something, just to talk to the board.
I'm going to just see if there's any residents that are here to talk or out in the Zoom land on ADUs, although I think we, as a board, have kind of given our, you know, thoughts and will, as a board, continue to watch it as we move forward. But if there is somebody that wants to speak, we'll certainly let them in.
Thank you, Chair. There are no hands raised.
Perfect. All right. So with that, we got some minutes to approve.
Uh, make a motion that we approve, I have all the minutes written, the August eighth special meeting. This was about the screening committee.
Second.
Got a motion and a second. Ms. Sadina?
Aye.
Mr. Trabu?
Aye.
Mr. Sumea?
Yes.
Henderson?
Yes.
Mr. Drew?
Aye.
And I am a yes.
Next, Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we approve the October fifteen meeting, regular meeting. I had minor edits. They were so minor, I don't even remember what it was. It was an S in Kennedy.
So some script that was provided to staff?
Yeah.
No problem. No problem. So we have a motion with some scribness errors, uh, and a second from Mr. Drew. Uh, Mr. Drew?
Aye.
Ms. Henderson?
Yes.
Mr. Semaya?
Yes.
Mr. Trabu?
Yes.
Ms. Adina?
Yes.
And I am a yes on those minutes also.
Uh, next, Mr. Chairman, the, uh, motion to approve the November twelfth planning board meeting agenda. No, minutes.
Second.
What am I see?
All right. Ms. Adina?
Yes.
Mr. Trabu?
Yes.
Mr. Semaya?
Yes.
Drew?
Aye.
Ms. Henderson?
Yes.
And I am a yes.
Next, Mr. Chairman, a motion to approve the December second planning board special meeting minutes.
Second.
All right. Mr. Semaya?
Yes.
Ms. Adina?
Yes.
Mr. Drew?
Aye.
Mr. Trabu?
Aye.
Ms. Henderson?
Yes.
And I am a yes. Wow. Getting some minutes taken care of. Perfect.
Thank you.
Uh, reports from committees, uh, Kelly, any, any updates from the CPC?
Um, no, at the, at this time, no. It looks like the, um, they're going pretty good forward with the skate park. Things look like they're moving forward. Uh, nothing other than that to report.
Great, thank you. Um, Marley's?
Uh, yes, Mr. Chairman, NIMCOG met January fifteen. So NIMCOG is kind of regional planning, housing, zoning, environment, arts culture. They completed a strategic plan for themselves. And also, eh, they're working on a new logo. So if you now recall, there is this little antiquated with mills and a, and a, you know, the kind of water wheel and, and they have, they ran some uh, designs by us. I don't know if it also went through the whole planning board to get input. I'm not sure.
I don't remember seeing that, but it's okay.
Okay. Yeah, it's okay.
Yeah.
Um, the other meeting I attended was, uh, on January twenty second, that's in the afternoon, NMMPO. That's about transportation part of the planning and also the construction funding. There was an updated NMMPO MOU. Hmm. Memorandum of Understanding. Uh, they voted on it and then there is a thirty day comment period also. You know, way over my head, let it go. Um, then there was talk about a resilience improvement plan which mentioned, uh, many, uh, communities, but not Billerica. And in my personal opinion, the Talbot Dam removal is about resilience. But, uh, they said, no, 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 that was definitely not, uh, mentioned. And what I thought was really remarkable, uh, a corridor study of one twenty-nine Brick Hill Road. This is where, um, Casablanca is and where UPS and there's a policeman holding the traffic directing. Um, there was a major, uh, there was money in the tip and plans were being made, but, um, Billerica wasn't really ready for it is how I understand the story. And the money was shifted because now they had to find a place to spend the money and it was shifted to Chelmsford Center Village, which was very painful for me. Yeah. Yes. Um, there was an LRTA bus stop inventory which concluded that Billerica scores poorly. And, uh, another point is District Four is working on improvements for bicycle and pedestrians, accessibility and bus stops. So that was good news after hearing that we need more. Um, the regional bike pack plan, because that's all they're doing, planning. A consultant was hired, but I haven't heard anything else, even though they specifically asked me to be part of it. Um, and then next, Mr. Chairman, open space and recreation plan committee, you were there yourself. Um, we're starting to plan our tree city and tree sapling cleanup, cleanup, um. Yeah.
Yep.
I think I can yield the floor.
And the, uh, open space recreation plan has also been approved by the state.
And I think I said that last month, didn't I? I think I said it last month. But it's, I, it's, it's great news and it can be said again.
Green news.
Because it means we get money. We are allowed to get money for the Ditzin Einherst
Yeah.
Park.
Yep. Mr. Drew, recodification.
So the committee's meet, has met every third Thursday of the month for the last several months. Uh, Blake is the other planning board member, as we all know. Um, the third three, third draft of the recodified zoning bylaws is out on the website. I encourage everyone to look at it. Uh, there are about thirty or forty or fifty or so, um, footnotes that still need to be resolved, similar to what we did with, um, MBTA zoning bylaw. There were some steps that needed to be resolved, one way, the others that the, um, consultants have put in there. Uh, there was a public, it wasn't a public hearing, but it was more of a public forum back on January twenty seventh that I was unable to attend, but Blake was there and I'm told he did very well to present it. Um, from here, I'll turn the floor over to Kat because again, I wasn't able to be there, but I know she was, so I'm sure she has more to add to it.
Chair, I can certainly do that. I actually am going to try something new today and I have some slides to organize my staff updates. So I just included it with that. So if you want to defer to any other committees before we head into staff updates.
I think that's it.
Okay, let me pull this up then. We don't have to keep this if we don't like it. It's just how I organize my brain this time.
There is a video recording of that recodification forum, uh, on, uh,
It is on the zoning recode webpage, yes.
On the webpage? Okay. Wasn't sure if it was on the new YouTube page or on BATV.
It is on the YouTube page as well, yes.
Right.
All right. So I have a few things to talk about and the first one up is the zoning recodification. So if you haven't
A slight presentation, so it's bigger?
Absolutely. One second.
Yeah.
All right. So for the zoning recodification, if you haven't heard of it yet, I just want to summarize what we're doing to the zoning bylaw. It is going to be a new format. You're even going to see some new language, but the same rules are going to be in there. So whatever you can do with your property right now, whatever dimensional standards you can do with your property right now, those rules are not changing. It's just the text itself that's completely overhauled to be a little bit easier to use. So in order to get ready for Springtown meeting, you can get to the draft on this website here. We ask you to compare it to the old draft and to share your feedback. So we do have an online link that we're going to be putting on that webpage or you can just reach out to any recod member, planning board member, planning staff, whoever you know, whoever you want to share your thoughts with. We're all happy to take it. And so from this webpage, the backslash zoning recod, you can see the draft, the current bylaw. We also have a crosswalk document, which is basically the old table of contents compared to the new table of contents. So you can see how the rearrangement has occurred. All right. I know a lot of people have been asking about MBTA community, so I wanted to put this up here really quick. First and foremost, our zoning is not in effect yet. We are waiting on the state to finalize their guidelines. We're waiting on our own bylaw to be reviewed by the AG and that is going to include notice requirements. So if you've heard any question about whether we got it all done or not, the AG's review will tell us anyway. And then there's another local bylaw review by the EO HLC, which is going to verify we comply with the guidelines. It's possible the guidelines change, so they might be checking for compliance against a document we haven't seen yet. That's still okay. So I have this table at the bottom. We have a couple of pop-ups on the Zoom screen, so hopefully everyone else can see the bottom line. But if the state guidelines are the same and if our local bylaw reviews pass, we don't need to do anything. There's nothing else to do. If our local reviews pass, but the state guidelines do change, depending on what changes, maybe we want something voluntary to go back to town meeting. Maybe it doesn't matter and we leave it as is. We don't know unless we know what changes with the state guidelines. If either of the local bylaw reviews fail, they will tell us what we need to do. Maybe we have to put something in the newspaper. Maybe we have to go back to town meeting. Maybe we actually have to change some language or clause. We don't know unless they tell us. We are just waiting until then. All right. Another information I want to share is the two fiftieth celebrations. So we do have a two fiftieth committee that's been meeting. Um, specifically, we're looking at the two hundred and fiftieth anniversaries of a couple of dates. April nineteen seventeen seventy-five, start of the American Revolution. July four seventeen seventy-six, signing of the Declaration of Independence. So there are plenty of other special dates in this time period. There are plenty of other revolutions and historic milestones since that time period as well. So the two fiftieth committee, the Minutemen, the Historical Society, a lot of people are planning different things and they've created a website. It's backslash two fifty committee that you'll be able to find and keep track of what they're doing, their next meeting dates, as we get calendar events scheduled, things like that.
Um, just a point of information, I guess, is, uh, so, uh, I know someone's working on a very, um, top notch documentary on, uh, the American, you know, American revolution in terms of, of Billerica. So that should be out, uh, fairly soon.
Yes. And so that is one of the things that the two fiftieth committee website will be able to link to is to help people find that documentary on BATV. All right. Next up, the CPTC conference is live. Registration is open. So that is for any planning board or zoning board members, any municipal staff. It is an annual event for statewide members. Saturday, March fifteenth, it's in Worcester, eight AM to three fifteen. So I put on this slide a sample itinerary. So after registration and breakfast, they have a keynote speaker. And then there's three different sessions with options. So you could choose whether to go to how to create a master plan or how to deal with the new ADU bylaw. You could go to site plan review, or you could go to something about regional planning and how to work with NIMCOG. Um, lunch is provided as well. And board members, make sure that you check pay by invoice and then forward staff any of the email confirmations you get. And last but not least, we have launched our next best in Billerica contest. So this quarter we are doing soups. Right now, we're still in the first phase, which is when restaurants are nominating themselves. And then at the beginning of March, we're going to advertise the full nomination list and then diners can go out, try them all and then vote for your favorite ones. And that is all I have.
How many soups you got nominated?
So we have one restaurant that's nominated themselves so far. I did get another nomination today. A member of the public went in and renominated the same restaurant that has already been nominated. So I'm not sure if they were really excited or if they thought they were voting, but for right now, we're asking restaurants to nominate themselves.
Mr. Chairman, how do you, um, contact the restaurants?
So earlier today I went through and if a restaurant had their email address on their webpage, then I've already sent them an email. A lot of restaurants don't have their email address on anymore. It's this kind of generic contact form. So my plan is throughout the week to go back in and re-message them one at a time through those forms. But anyone who actually had an email address, I sent that out earlier today.
Okay. So you're creating sort of a group? So you can, every contest you have or?
No, because some of our contests aren't going to be applicable to every type of business. Some of them might not even be a restaurant. We might do best manicures or something like that. So it can always vary. So right now, we're just trying to make sure that if you provide the product that we're doing, we want to make sure that you know about this contest. You have the link if you want to nominate yourself.
Okay. Thank you.
And then there is a Facebook event page as well.
Thank you.
We'll get this rolling. Good stuff. All right, Ms. Adina, you wanted to take the floor real quick? I'll give you a
Yeah, I just, um, sorry guys. I'm not sure if everybody's familiar, uh, or knows already. I know Mike, you're running again and I wish you the best of luck that you get in. You've done a great job, eh, as Chair also incredible job. Ed, um, I know you're running this year too. And I wish you the best of luck getting in also, and I hope to see you sitting on the board after April, I, that you're still there. I decided with things would, are happening with my family, five grandkids, health issues, things like that, that it's best that I step, step down from even attempting to run again. I did enjoy my time with you guys. You probably think I didn't, but I did. You probably didn't enjoy much of your time with me, but I understand I'm a pain in the butt. I get that. I'm persistent. I learned a lot. Um, I learned a lot about myself at the same time and ways that I can improve myself. Uh, just to let you guys know, I'm not going away. I'll still find projects when I find interesting, probably be in front of you questioning you to death on it. But other than that, I did enjoy my time with the board and I just wanted to address this before April's time came up and I wish it's all the best of luck. I have nothing but respect for each and every one of yous. Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
Thank you, Kelly.
Thank you.
Thank you for, for putting your, you know, your name out there and and on the ballot and going through the, the process there. So
Right.
Good luck to you.
Thanks.
Still got one more month, Kelly. You're not done yet.
Yeah, yeah. You got one more meeting.
Oh, but you guys are not done with me. You know, I'll be still poking around and planning because I do enjoy it. I just don't have as much time to dedicate towards it right now. And I think it's just best, it's always good to see new people on boards and committees.
Perfect. Thank you, Kelly.
Thank you.
With that, uh, our next regular meeting is Monday, March tenth at seven PM.
A motion to adjourn?
Second.
Uh, Mr. Drew?
Aye.
Ms. Henderson?
Yes.
Mr. Semaya?
Yes.
Mr. Trabu?
Yes.
Ms. Adina?
Yes.
I am a yes. Good night, everybody.
Good night, guys.